I'd like to welcome you all to the Joint Hybrid Planning Board Meeting of March 25th. Call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Mr. Lee Cion.
Here.
Ms. Folley.
Here.
Ms. Rolle.
Here.
Did you say Sarah? I think Sarah spoke for me.
Ms. Felbrick.
Here.
And Ms. Tenny.
Here.
It looks like we have Quam tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak, and this meeting is being recorded. First item up are acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence, a letter from Ms. Colbert, and something from the town of Wenham. At this time, anybody from the public would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Okay, so, this meeting was supposed to be a joint meeting between the task force and the planning board. I received notice this afternoon that for some technical reason, there was not enough time to properly post the joint meeting. As a result, the full task force cannot engage tonight. However, Chair Chris Olney will present some of the material, and other members of the task force present can actively participate. More members presenting are, and of course you can confirm this, I have myself, Ms. Felbrick, Mr. Smith, and Anne Harrison. So, I also understand that our consultant, Emily Ennis, will be arriving at 7:00. So, trying to make a good thing out of a bad, I'd like to proceed. I know the task force has been doing a great job, multiple backgrounds, meeting almost weekly now, coalescing, coming up with a plan that was voted on, I think, two weeks ago. And it took a lot of work off the planning board's shoulders, and I think we have a better Manchester for it. So, with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Chris, if you have some, how you want to present this going forward.
Sure, I have a statement to make. And then maybe we'll have to pause until Emily gets here.
Okay, we could move things out of order.
Do you want to do that first, or you want...
We could. So, I don't have much on the agenda. Rules and regulations, driveway entrance, final application form. I think, Mark, you've taken care of that.
Yeah, so what I've done is I went upstairs and I met with Public Works about that, and then I reviewed what you were proposing for a form, for a special permit application. And then I compared that to our current special permit application, because the planning board has a special permit application, and it's very similar. There's a few little things that are different, and then there's a bunch of requests for information, but that's already in the bylaws. So it's kind of redundant to have a bunch of little sentences at the end of the application asking for information that's already in the rules and regs. So I think we ought to, and I'll email it around to the planning board, or you can find it on our webpage under the planning board, is look at the current application and see if there's anything else you think should be, because we really should just have one application for a special permit. Like it asks for the districts, it asks for information on the lot, on the size, and if it's in any special zoning district, which are all things that you had on your new application. So the planning board should have one special permit application. If there's anything that you feel really should be in our one application, we can add that to that. But I didn't see anything that really stood out as needing a whole separate application and create more bureaucracy, because what happens when the next special permit, you feel that something else in town meeting approves it, you're going to create a third application and then a fourth application.
So do the same fees apply whether it's a special permit or a curb opening?
I'll check, double-check that, but on our current application, it says fee applied. So we may have other fees under other bylaws that are filed as special permits that may be different. So you would go...
Okay. Comments from the board?
I just want a question. We have that picture, although it's not a great picture, of the curb cuts with the apron and the radius and all that. Where would that go, or are you saying just scrap that?
Yeah, well, it wouldn't be on the, it's in your regulation. So you have a bylaw that sets out certain parameters, and then the bylaw allows you to adopt additional regulations. So you adopted those three or four-page additional regulations. So those now apply to anybody requesting a curb cut. So the first step is it goes to Public Works to see if it complies, and if it complies with everything, they can issue the permit. And as per the bylaw says, if it doesn't comply, so for example, if they want two entrances, or they have a large lot and they want a double-wide driveway, then that would be submitted to the planning board as a special permit.
Gotcha. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Mark. You'll send that to us for...
Yep.
So, as a placeholder, I put annual town meeting on the agenda, but after my research with Mark, we have nothing on annual town meeting, correct?
Not at this time, no.
I want to be safe.
Yeah, as, yeah. As I'm here and we work through other applications, we identify things that should be added, cleaned up, things from the recodification that got missed. And so, future town meetings will have additional items.
Ron.
Okay.
So, just from the paper, not that I've been privy, or the planning board's been privy, but do we need to chime in on the senior center?
I don't think we've been asked to, unless the board has a special reason.
Unless it's a transfer of property, we usually have to write a report and weigh in about real estate.
I'm not aware of what's going on, but if you want to enlighten us.
Just with the paper, it says that they're going to bring it to town meeting, and we're going to vote on whether we should accept, you know, a portion of the Massana call as a senior center.
We haven't received any requests from either Greg's office or the select board at this point, whether to ask for...
Our bylaws state that the planning board should opine before any real estate transaction, so...
Okay.
It usually happens at the last minute because we don't plan, but it would be nice if we actually applied the information ahead of time to look at.
I'll check that, and then we can add it to the subsequent planning board.
Thank you.
Liaison committees, task force. Sarah, anything on harbor management plan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, last Tuesday, we had about 30 or 40 people at the high school, and we divided up into four stations. I can remember one on voting and safe voting, one on public access, one on environmental considerations and climate change, and one on fisheries. And so we got a lot of really good input from people about what they're concerned about, or what their ideas are. And there'll be more public input requests to come, but I think we got a good start, and I think the consultants got some good things that they should look at that they might not have thought about. So it was very successful, and appreciate everybody who came and the hard work of Buy On Pike and the Urban Harvest Institute folks who really did a lion's share of work.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing on a CPC. Any other liaison meeting with any reports? Okay.
So do we know what the difference is between the version that we were just given versus the version that...
I knew there was a typo, but it wasn't corrected, so I don't know.
Do you know, Mark?
No, it's still there.
Can we go back to Christina's comment, just to give Mark a head start? What is the bylaw that you're referring to? I don't have it off the top of my head. Many board needs to run a report about real estate transactions. Yeah, just in my, since Mark is fairly... I think Mark can find it in the bylaws. I think he's... Great to have the site, though. Looking for my Bible.
Ron, Greg has his hand up. Ron, Greg has his hand up.
Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, just kind of check. So yes, it is appropriate and necessary for the planning board to give an opinion about different real estate transactions. And so we're preparing for the planning board a summary of the proposal for your next meeting, and that would be in time for the April 24th annual town meeting.
Okay, thanks. We've got two meeting minutes to approve, February 12th and February 26th. Any comments from the board on either of those? Take a motion. To approve?
A motion to approve, or a second?
Motion's been made, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise hands. Opposed, none, and that's for both. Thank you. Okay. We'll be thinking about this quickly. Is there any reason why we can't just start? And Emily can kind of pick up where... So yeah, if you want to start with your statement, and then we can...
We'll go from there, okay. So the task force has come a very long way since last June. We've learned about the MBTA Communities Law and its requirements. We've learned that there already are pockets of dense multifamily housing in the town that mostly go unnoticed and serve their residents very well. We've learned about elements of the town that people want to preserve. We've learned about the computerized compliance model and how it works. And we've learned that many town residents are willing and anxious to engage with us and want to understand our zoning regulations. The members of the task force have been working very hard on this project. We've been working on three different aspects simultaneously. The first is the location of new overlay districts for the town. The second is the creation of design guidelines for new development. And the third is in engaging with the public to explain the law, receive comments, and answer questions. And they all deserve our thanks for the work that they've been doing. It's not a job that we want to do, but we would prefer to offer possible solutions rather than face the potential consequences if we fail to comply with the MBTA Communities Law. We don't always agree on some of the assumptions or predictive results, but we do agree on a basic framework of how we can comply. And that's pretty remarkable, given our different backgrounds and interests. And we'll note that one member will not support any solution, which is, of course, their right. In selecting potential districts, we've relied on a set of guiding principles. Most basic of these is our commitment to minimizing potential changes to the town that might result from these new zoning requirements. We want to make sure that existing buildings, and especially those with historic significance, are not threatened with demolition. We want to preserve our businesses and restaurants and not have them replaced with high-priced condos. The importance of small scale and a variety of architectural style is the key to preserving town character. A major goal is to minimize the number of new incremental residential units that could be allowed. We can do this by limiting new zoning districts to areas of town that are already densely settled with residential units and to areas that have small lots, which can support only a small number of units in a new development. We can't make everybody happy, and we have to make trade-offs to get to a reasonable plan. And I also want to clear up a couple of misunderstandings and some misinformation that's been circulating. The first is, we're proposing a number of zoning overlay districts. These overlay districts do not change the underlying zoning, which remains in effect. The new overlay districts allow the development of multifamily housing, but only if certain specific requirements are met. Height, lot coverage, and density limits, along with off-street parking requirements, are credited to our current zoning, and they will remain. The second big misunderstanding, these new zoning districts do not override wetland protection laws or any other environmental rules. The Conservation Commission will continue to oversee any development that might be allowed by this zoning. And third, there is no proposal to allow the development of the 140 acres that is owned by Gordon College. There's been a lot of discussion about the possibility of developing a small part of the land, about six to seven acres, in exchange for a permanent conservation use to protect the remainder of all this land and the watershed. However, this proposal is not part of the plan we're presenting this evening. The task force has considered the LCD as a possible zone, because every acre that can be rezoned out in the LCD is one less acre that has to be rezoned as an overlay district inter mere the downtown. So here's where we are. The task force is proposing the creation of four overlay districts, with some sub-districts, which would comply with the law. The rules setting the unit capacity of each district need to be fine-tuned, and these adjustments may result in changes to the boundaries of these districts or even to changes in the districts themselves. But this is a start. One of the districts, the downtown, the Pine Street, Morse Court, Elm Street, Opera House, Main area, is pretty well set in our minds as a reasonable place to start, because it meets a number of the criteria for the district right away. But again, this could be fine-tuned as we go along. It'll be sub-districts, we could allow more density in parts of this area and less density in other parts. When Emily gets here, she can explain all about the, how the law works, how the model works, and how we came up with the data to support these proposed districts. So I should, I guess, mention the members of the task force that are actually here this evening. Again, because our meeting wasn't posted properly, we are not in session here, but there are, unfortunately, there are five of us. But Gar, you've got to keep your mouth closed and just pretend you're on Zoom. So Sue Felbrick and I are on the task force, of course. Richard Smith is on the Historic Commission. Gar Morris is the Downtown Improvement Program Commission, and Anne Harrison representing the select board, and she has her hand raised.
I checked with Greg this afternoon, and it is his belief that as long as this was posted as a joint meeting by the planning board with the task force, then there's been proper notice that the task force is here.
That's good to know, okay, great.
So everyone can speak?
If we're in a properly noticed meeting, we should probably call ourselves to order.
Oh. All right, well, I guess I'll call, I'll take this opportunity.
Well, let me just hear from Greg. What I got, a little something just like, go ahead, Greg.
Thanks, Ron. So when I originally talked to Anne, I felt that the notice had included both boards at the top of the agenda. It does not. It only lists the planning board as the board posting, you know, meeting. Town Council felt that it was a bit of a twang toss, because it is listed later in the agenda that it is a joint meeting. He felt if we wanted to be a little more cautious, that it would not be a full meeting. It would be not a fully recognized meeting of the task force, but that members, all members of the task force certainly can listen in, and that not a majority would be speaking. So four out of the nine could participate in the meeting this evening. But he felt if you wanted to be cautious in terms of open meeting law, then you would go that route. He felt that if, you know, if you really felt strongly about it, then you could go forward. But again, lawyers tend to be cautious, so he would recommend a little caution.
Okay, well, so we won't call a meeting to order?
But I'd like to move forward. You guys have made some decisions on some areas. At least that could be translated to us.
Yes.
Get some groundwork going.
Yeah, and actually Emily just walked in.
Hi, Emily, welcome.
So we should probably ensure, this is Emily Ennis, who is the principal of the consulting team that the town has hired to help us through this process. And she has a little presentation to make with some slides.
Okay. Do we need co-hosts?
Just loading it up, and I'll be with you in right one moment.
Let me tell, I could take some questions if people have any.
Any questions from the audience? Identify yourself.
Yes, Isabella Bates to Masconomo. Chris, are you referring to Pine Street number two map when you were just us talking?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
And that area is about, I think it's 18 acres altogether, which is what is required by the law, just that at least half of all of our zoning has to be within a half-mile of the transit station.
You need one...
We need a contiguous, one of the districts has to be contiguous.
It has to be half.
Half of the total 17 acres.
Which is why we have...
Isn't it 40%?
The one district to, this to be the one larger district. All of the other districts that are selected have to be a minimum of 5 acres.
Would it be appropriate to talk through all the maps?
I think that'll be part of the presentation, right? Sarah Pierce.
Hi, yes, thank you, Sarah Pierce, Knight French Street. I just had a question on the last, I guess it's the Design Guidelines Subcommittee. There was talk at the end of the meeting about having five-story buildings, four stories of residential with a parking garage on the first floor. One, where, I'm assuming that would be taking place in the LCD, if that is an actual consideration? And two, if it is an actual consideration, how does that fall in line with preserving the character of Manchester by the Sea? Thank you.
Well, so the character of the LCD is open woodland and some industrial spaces out there at the moment. I don't think anyone thinks of it as representing the character of the town right now. The discussion about the five-story buildings and the parking underneath it was a point made by the architects that that would preserve most of the open space. The more you can put a building on a smaller footprint and put parking under it, the less disturbance there is to the land around it. So that was the subject of the discussion. It's not anything that's been put on the table.
Okay, so is that for the LCD, or is it for the downtown?
We'd never do that in the downtown, five stories, no.
But you would still, it would still definitely, in my opinion, change the character of the town to have a five-story residential building?
Well, believe it or not, there's a four-and-a-half-story building in the downtown right now that no one seems to notice.
Where is that?
It's located on Union Street, 33 Union, I believe.
So that was another question I had about stories. Is there, when you're planning these stories for each building, is there an actual height maximum that you're, or minimum that you're using for each story? Or is that something, I know you can't say specifically now, but some stories are 12 feet, some are 14. So I'm just, and we had discussed earlier on about, I think the height of buildings is really important in preserving Manchester by the Sea, because we have one building, maybe that's, I don't know, a full four stories. I have, I don't know which one you're referring to, but typically, most buildings and homes are two stories in Manchester by the Sea. So that's just my comment.
Actually, that's not true. Most buildings in this town are two-and-a-half stories or two stories with a pitched roof on top.
Okay, but they're two, they're not four or five. That's just my comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I just clear? It's 40% within the half-mile.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about the contiguous, one district has to be contiguous. That is half of the whole area.
Yep, I can share with you.
Okay, Emily, you have the control.
Great. Thank you very much for having me here. Just again, for the record, my name is Emily Ennis. I'm president of Ennis Associates. We've been assisting the MBTA Task Force, and therefore the town, with modeling, and will be assisting with the draft zoning. Not here with me tonight, but also part of the team is Archage Associates. They will be doing an economic feasibility analysis model for the affordable housing. So with that, I'm just going to talk through a little bit about what we've been doing so far, starting off with just a very brief MBTA Communities Act 101, talk a little bit about the requirements for Manchester, the current model that we're using, where we are now, and the implications of that, and a little bit about the allowable review processes. So with that, just as a reminder, because not everybody in the room has been as in-depth as the task force or myself, the MBTA Communities Act is a law. It was established a requirement for 177 communities that are designated under the law as MBTA communities to develop a zoning district for multifamily housing being permitted as upright, and we'll go through each of these terms. That multifamily housing cannot have age restrictions, and it must be suitable for families with children. It must have a minimum gross density of 15 dwelling units per acre. And part of the district in those communities that have a transit station, a part of the district must be located within a half-mile of a commuter rail or subway. It also is ferry or bus, but primarily commuter rail or subway. The purpose was, we're running out of housing in Massachusetts. We don't have enough. We don't have enough that is affordable to all people in a community, and we are at a disadvantage in competing with other states for talent, for businesses, for jobs. So that is the purpose, that was a reason the new law was done. But there's a lot of misinformation out there about the MBTA Communities Act. So let's kick it off by saying what the act is not. And it is not a mandate to build housing. This is a zoning district. It allows the option for property owners to develop as they choose, or not, under the district. But it's not a mandate for the town itself to build housing. There's no housing production target that says if the town doesn't build X amount of housing by Y number of years, that something bad will happen. No target like that. You're just given a, what we'll talk about is a unit capacity for the zoning to have. No target like that. You're just given a, what we'll talk about is a unit capacity for the zoning to have. It's also not restricted just to affordable housing. This has been a common misperception that it is all about affordable housing. It's not. A community can choose to add affordable housing to the requirements of the zoning. Some communities already have something called an inclusionary zoning law, but there's no requirement that that be in there. And it's not a one-size-fits-all tool for a community. Some communities have a wide range of housing needs based on income, age, type of housing. This isn't going to help with all of those. It however, can be an important part of a community's housing strategy. And it's not viewed as optional. And we see recent news with communities that are either not in compliance or thinking about not being in compliance. The state has been very clear that they don't view this as optional. So just a couple of definitions, and these are taken from what's called the Compliance Guidelines, which is a document that EO HLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, created to help communities comply with the law and understand what the requirements are for compliant. So as of right is development that can proceed under a zoning ordinance or by law without the need for another level of approval. So special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. In other words, once the zoning is enacted, once it's adopted by the community, then somebody can actually make an application under that zoning to build something. Now, you are allowed to have site plan review and design review, and I'll talk about that later on. But you can't have the special permit process. Multifamily housing itself is defined as a building with three or more residential dwelling units or, and this does get confusing, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. And what that translates to is a minimum of two duplexes on one lot. So your absolute minimum is a three-family or two duplexes on one lot. And then obviously, you can go up to whatever the community chooses to zone for. A multifamily zoning district can be either a base district or an overlay district. For those who may be listening who are property owners, everybody who's a property owner has a base zoning district. Your property is zoned to do something with. It might be what you have now, it might not be. You might have something that predated that zoning and so now you're non-conforming, but you are zoned. An overlay district, which is also an option, sits on top of that base zoning. So if you are the property owner, you have the option of either doing something under the base zoning or doing something on top of, or under the overlay zoning. However, you can't pick and choose. So you can't say, oh, you know what, I really like the setbacks in the base zoning and I like the height in the overlay, so I'm gonna put them together. You can't do that. You have to choose one or the other. And once you've made that choice, you're bound by the, by the rules of the zoning district that you took. So the zoning district can be either base or overlay. The multifamily has to be allowed out of right. The district has to be a fixed location or locations. In other words, you can't just say somewhere in town, we're allowing multifamily. It's like any other zoning district that you have. It has to be a specific area and it has to be on a map that's part of the ordinance or by law. I talked about an overlay district already and it's the same thing, it's the same overlay. The, the definition got messed up here, it's got the previous one, but it's what I talked about that sits on top of the base. Couple more terms. So I mentioned unit capacity earlier. And unit capacity is the number of dwelling units for which you need to zone. And this is where some of that misinformation came in. There is a calculation in the compliance guidelines, I've got it in the small text below. It's based on the type of community. You are, of course, a commuter rail community. And the number of housing units in the 2020 census and the minimum land area. So your original calculation was based on your 2,433 housing units, which were the 2020 census. But in fact, you're also capped to 1.5% of developable land. So I think an earlier document went out where you had 39 acres was your required minimum. It's actually 37 because of that 1.5% cap. And I confirmed that with EO HLC this morning. The compliance model I mentioned earlier, it is how you, EO HLC asks you to determine compliance with the size, density, and location requirements. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that compliance model as we go through. It's an Excel spreadsheet that requires a couple of different inputs. So the model itself is this Excel spreadsheet. For those of you who do Excel a lot, it has a number of different tabs. At each tab, you add specific information. The first thing you need to pull is what's called GIS or Geographic Information Systems. That is your parcel data. It's what the address is, it's the legal identification of the parcel, it's the number of acres in the parcel, whether it has excluded land and if so, what type, and whether it has sensitive land. All of that is pulled from layers that the state created to be used in the model. Your zoning, the next piece, so once those are in, those are the model itself.
I'm gonna say that off, cut.
The next piece is the zoning, and that comes from two possible places. One is your existing zoning. So if you're saying, oh, I would like this to look like, what happens if I model the general district? What does that look like? Then you can take the zoning from the general district and input it. Or you can say, we'd like to try something else. We would like to zone a parcel in the LCD, but we want to vary what's currently allowed in the LCD. You can also put that into the model itself. And what happens is the zoning is applied to the land area and it creates an output that is the unit capacity parcel by parcel within the district, the density parcel by parcel within the district, and also the total number of unit capacity, the total density for each of the districts. And that's what the task force has been working on since last summer. And then as I came in, we continued to refine that and look at those. So when we think about zoning parameters, there's some key parameters that the model uses, but there are also some zoning parameters that you would find in your zoning that aren't in the model. So when we start to think about zoning, we want to think about how those interrelate. For the compliance model, we're looking at things like minimum lot size, lot area per dwelling unit. And not every community uses every single one of these. Building height, building coverage, floor area ratio, open space, parking, dwelling units per lot and dwelling units per acre. The model takes all of those and applies that to the GIS, depending on what the community is input. Setbacks, step backs. Setbacks are the distance of the building from the property line, starting at the base of the lowest story of the building. Step backs, some communities are generally looking at much higher heights than you're looking at, but some communities will allow a building to go up three, maybe four stories and then require the, the higher stories to be stepped back from that front facade. And that's to allow a more sort of, a nicer experience at the street level. If they have narrower streets, for example, as I said, you're not really looking at the heights where you would do step backs at the moment. And then lot coverage, which is building and parking. So those are a couple of parameters. There's a few more, but those are a couple of them that aren't part of this. So for Manchester, your minimum land area is 37 acres. You need to have 40% of your acres within the station area, so within that half-mile radius. Your minimum unit capacity is 559 units. Same thing, 40% of the units have to be in the station area. As with everybody else, you have to have 15 dwelling units per acre. And then there's something called the minimum contiguous district size. And if you remember, they talked about a neighborhood of reasonable size in the, in the law. That minimum contiguous district size is to, to keep that idea of there being at least one real neighborhood in, in the district. You can have as many districts as you want, but they can't, you can't have any that are less than five acres. So that's been something that we've been testing a lot to see what that works. And you must have that one that's 50% of the total district size. That 25 acres was from an earlier calculation, so ignore that. It's actually 18.5 acres for you all. So the current model. So we have with the task force, as I said, been working through a number of different iterations. And it's important to understand when you start balancing multiple districts with each other, that 15 dwelling units per acre is an average of all of the districts. And allows you to increase the density in some areas and decrease it in others so that you get that overall 15 units per acre. So as we collectively looked at the districts, it became how much above that minimum 40% that does the town want in the station area? What are the implications for land outside the station area? Where do you want to put the density and is it higher in some places and lower than the others? We had a couple of combinations that didn't work because they were fine for number of acres and fine for unit capacity, but they were too low in density. We also had a few that were too high, and so we wanted to bring them down to try and come to what looks like a minimum scenario. So these are the models that we used, the, sorry, the zoning parameters that we used. So you see the Pine Street sub-districts, Newport Park, Pine Street, Moore Saw Mill, Powderhouse, Elm Street. I'll show you maps in a, in a minute. And Valentine to Summer. We use the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, 2.5 stories, 40% lot coverage. That structures, the parking requirement of 1.5 spaces per unit. That's pretty close to what you have now. You do have, I mean, there's obviously setbacks in the existing zoning. You also have a restriction of four dwelling units per acre, which we took out. And I should say that Newport Park and Pine Street are actually not the G district. I see, yeah, those two are not the G district, but we modeled them all according to this. Having said that, as we continue talking about these, we haven't done a lot of refining of the dimensional standards. So as we look at this today, note, note that we've been focused on the geography and getting the geography balance right. There's absolutely, within this process, still time to talk about whether or not these dimensional standards are the right ones and if they're not, what they should be. But I called them out because you need to know what we started with as our base. For the Calvin property, which is the property that's outside that half-mile radius, that five-acre minimum requirement is the purge for the LCD district. The rest, we kept at the same dimensional standards as the others, just to see what would happen. And again, plenty of time to change that. And in fact, I did make a change and I'll talk about it in a minute. So this current scenario is compliant. It has 37 acres, 559 units. You see all of the districts to the left. Those are the station area districts. And you can see what each district comes up to. So we've got the district acres. Those acres are from the layer that the state gave us to use. Just for a note, for anybody who goes to home to look up those acres, that doesn't always match up to the assessor's data because when they created those layers, they went and measured each of the parcels with GIS data. Assessor's data might be relying on earlier deeds. I know for a fact that in some communities, those deeds can be inaccurate, so I've run into it before. So these are from the state's layers for the acres. We put the number of units allowed by right under the proposed MBTA zoning. And what we mean by that is what I showed you on the previous page. So those are the current dimensional standards. And so that gives us the calculated density or dwelling units per acre. We also use, there's, Mass Housing Partnership uses, has a website called Residensity that shows you what the current number of units and the current density is on every parcel in Massachusetts. Actually, it's very useful. So we pulled the number of the existing units according to Residensity. And again, there might be a slight difference between the assessors, but we just wanted to make sure we had a consistent set of data. So we're showing here the number of existing units according to Residensity. Then we're subtracting that from the calculated density, showing you how many more additional units there could be under the zoning, you know, in the unit capacity of the zoning. And we also counted up the number of parcels that could support additional units. And what that means is any parcel that has fewer than, fewer existing units than the calculated units. So for example, if we calculated that a parcel could have five units and it currently has three, it's counted in this. If we calculated that it had three units and it currently has three units, it's not within this number. And you can see the total number of acres, the total of unit capacity, and the total density is, is all compliant. Now, the next slide I'm going to show you is actually a non-compliant district. What I did was I put an additional restriction on the Calvin property. You can see right now, it's got a potential units allowed based on the parameters I showed you of 199. I said, what happens if I put an artificial limit on that or a restriction on that? That gets it down to 100 units. And what happens, and it's a good reminder that these things all work together, is that with just 100 units, it meets the, you know, it's fine, it's 7.6 acres, but when it averages in with the rest with only a 14.4 density, it brings the total density down. And so now you have not enough units and not enough density. So as we look at all of these districts and say, what are the appropriate dimensional standards for these districts? We'll want to, again, double check them, not just individually, but also with each other. And that's because the Calvin property and some of these other properties have what's called excluded land on it. And excluded land is defined in the compliance guidelines as land that cannot be modeled for capacity. It includes surface water, it includes wetlands, it includes public land, publicly owned land, and some other categories. There's also something called sensitive land, which could be modeled for unit capacity, but they call it out because it's land that the community might be concerned with. For example, flood plains, you can model that, but maybe the community, a particular community, doesn't want to build there or doesn't want to allow a lot of density there. So the presence of excluded land means you can't just do a straight mathematical calculation on the number of acres. So I'm just going to show each of these districts to you. This is the overall map. So you can see the districts within the half-mile radius and then the Calvin property up here. And because that is a little bit too difficult to read on a PowerPoint presentation, I've just zoomed in for each one. The information here is the same as the information in the tables that we showed you, but we can just go through piece by piece. So Newport Park is this orange piece here. I've centered each, and these slides, I believe, should be available after this meeting on the website. There's a.
Let's give a quick question about the data.
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, for Newport Park, because it was the prior slide and then this slide. So on our GIS system, it says Newport Park is three acres, not four acres?
That's.
And the number of existing units are 32, not 42.
So the 42 is pulled from Residensity. And as I said, there may be some errors there. We can double, we can go through and double check if you're spotting anything that's different. It's supposed to be pulled from assessor's data, so they should be the same, but in the case where the assessor's data has been updated. That's also for the whole district, and the district is actually three parcels. So this Newport Park district has three parcels on it. So the district acres is all three parcels together, the number of units is all three parcels together.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm, I'm just going off the GIS and the Housing Production Plan and then the Housing Authority site. So I'm just wondering which data trumps which data, right?
Right. So for the three parcels here, for the compliance model, we have to use the database that the state gave us. So those three parcels add up to four acres according to the state database. For the Residensity, that's just helpful information to show you. So if it's wrong, we can go back and double check it. And we can work off your assessor's data if that's more up to date. So, but for any of the district acres, that's going to be the state's data layer.
And how do we have access to the state data?
Uh, it's on the website. So EO HLC has a website for MBTA Communities Act. Everything I've talked about today is on there. So there is, you can look up every single community. There's also the compliance model, the methodology for the compliance model, which includes how to download the state data layers into GIS. It has the compliance guidelines that I mentioned. It actually, it hasn't been updated since, I think, mid-February, but it's got a list of the status of each community and what they've put in. I think the last time I saw it was February 15th. It has a sample, actually, planning board members, you may be interested in this. It has the sample zoning that EO HLC developed to help communities at least start from a base. There's a good set, actually, I shouldn't say that because I helped develop that. I think it's a good set of appendices in there. It was designed for non-planners to read, and that's why I say it's a good. It was designed for non-planners to read, and that's why I say it's a good set, a little bit less jargon, but all of those resources are there, and that's where you can go from.
Right, thank you.
So I don't, I want to show you the districts up close, so I'll sort of hover over each of these slides, but really, this is so we can go back and look at it if you have questions for any of these. And then I see you also have the maps that marked in, which are much more detailed than this. I was afraid that they wouldn't look as good on the slides, so I suggested that we print them, but I think these should all be available after the meeting. So just finishing up, and then this is the Calvin property. The Calvin property, this was a slightly different version of the map, so it's, these are all at the same scale, but Calvin properties are just slightly different scales. So it is also smaller than the others, just to let you know. I should have put it that way, this is not the scale. So with that, just a couple of other things. The task force has been working on a criteria, a list of criteria, about how it thinks about the different districts for compliance. So this can be a useful exercise for communities, you know, why would you pick one district over the other? There is, of course, what's happening on the ground, and that's also been a subject of discussion for the task force, what is in each of these districts now, what do we think might be different? And then I just want to cover the allowable review processes. So I mentioned that you can do site plan review. This information is from the sample zoning and, which also pulled from the compliance guidelines. So a site plan review, you can regulate the use, unlike a special permit where you can deny the use. You cannot deny the use in a special, in a site plan review, but you can regulate it. You can have development standards, you can have a site plan review process where the applicant comes in front of the planning board, some communities do zoning board of appeals, and you can impose those reasonable terms and conditions. That sample zoning that I mentioned has the commentary and an appendix on site plan review. The Mass Municipal Lawyers Association or Legal Association, MMLA, currently has on their website all of the three communities that have been approved, they have their approval letters. They also have the pre-application review for, I think, the communities through about mid-February, so if you're interested in the details, some of them do discuss site review, that would be worth looking at. And so site plan review, you can't prohibit the use. You can also have development standards, which I mentioned earlier, and design guidelines. Development standards are those criteria that are measurable, they're quantifiable. Typically, when you think of site plan review, you're thinking about circulation, access, how the building sits on the lot. You can discuss the appearance of the building, and that may be where the design guidelines come in. So standards may, are generally around that access, how the building relates to the street and to other buildings on the same lot or next to it. Design guidelines, and again, this language comes from the commentary in the sample zoning, they must be objective, they can't be subjective. In other words, there can't be discretion around them. Thou shalt have good design, or attractive design is a little bit too nebulous for design guidelines under this law, but if you can talk about the relationship of existing buildings to the development context, that, you can work, you can definitely work with that. There's a couple of other things. So unfortunately, they, EOHLC has not yet approved any districts that have design guidelines, so we're kind of working to figure out what would, and Manchester's not the only community that's considering design guidelines that I'm working with, so we're trying to figure out how best to express it in a way that gets the community, you know, the comfort of having the design review and, because that can be really important, especially in a community that has a strong historical development pattern, but also making sure that the multifamily is still allowed as a right. So a ridiculous example that I give is you can't require something of multifamily that you're not requiring of other buildings in the same area. So what I say is, you can't say that multifamily has to provide a hundred percent solar, but everybody else can just be solar-ready. So, you know, it's that difference in degrees. So with that, that is all the information I had for you. I'm happy to flip back, answer any questions, go into more detail about the compliance model or the requirements, so I'll turn it back to you.
Are design guidelines enforceable in a by-right acquisition of property?
They can, so they can be done in the, take a step or two back. The development standards, if you had a form of administrative review, development standards, the way I think of them is that they're a checklist, right? Is this person did this, did this, did this, did this, they're good to go. A community that wanted a administrative review process could do that. I think design guidelines are appropriate in an as-of-right, if they are that measurable, that easily, you've either done it or you haven't, and they're part of the site plan review process. There have been, there've been a few communities that I've talked to in the past about design guidelines and administrative review, but I don't think that they've gone through with that. It was just more of an exercise to discuss. But again, as long as you've got that measurable, quantifiable, easily-understood, nondiscretionary. I can remember a planning board I know that spent three or four meetings, several hours of a meeting, talking about the color of the mortar. That is not a position you want to be in with an as-of-right use, so.
Okay, before I get, Gail, you've had your hand up a while. Is there something? Okay, questions from the board? Gary?
Sure. So I guess I'll go from the back forward. You talked a little bit about, well, site plan. So if there's an overlay district and somebody comes in and says, I want to, instead of fifteen units, you know, or whatever random number is in there, I want to build seventeen, so I'm going to go to the ZVA for a special permit. Does that negate the fifteen by right? So is it now in a special permit process that is, actually, it wouldn't even be allowed? So it's not allowed in the district? So you can't go above and beyond what's, I guess is my question.
That is an excellent question. So let's say that you zoned it for two and a half stories of height, and you put a number of units, since you've got a four-unit restriction now, which is up for the sake of this example, say you had a restriction of no more than ten units per lot, right? And somebody comes in and says, I don't like that, I'd like to do a four-story building, and I'd like to have twenty units per lot. They can't do that, the zoning doesn't allow that.
Okay.
So it is, and I think that's very important for people to understand. I've had a couple of communities where they were concerned that as-of-right meant that somebody can do whatever they want. I'm glad you asked the question because they still have to obey the zoning, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understood the as-of-right part, I just was questioning, because I, there's been little blurbs here and there that say, no, but they could go for a variance or they could go for a special permit, but it doesn't sound like they could.
If the zoning doesn't allow for a special permit, then they can't go for, there's no special permit that would allow them to do that. If it's a variance, they would have to prove hardship to the ZVA of why they couldn't meet the zoning. That's typically not allowed, my understanding, is that's typically not allowed for extra density. It's usually allowed for things like, I can't quite meet the setback, you know, I'm five inches off the setback because my property has a really weird topography compared to the other topographies. It's not, I don't like your height restriction, I want more, so.
So it's fair to say it could be for setbacks? I'm just trying to think of something else, but it wouldn't be for number of units or height or-
Right, because they'd be out of compliance with the zoning at that point.
Thank you.
See? Have you had them?
I had my hand up.
Are you the machine that has a handle?
I do have some questions.
Play on.
I wasn't really, I was, I don't know. So just take, for instance, the Pine Street number two map. So just on the, I guess, the south-westerly side of Pine Street, my understanding that is District A. And so these are modeled on six thousand square foot lots.
For the sake of testing the geography and the compliance, as I said, all of those dimensional standards, we can continue work with, but yes, right now, it's modeled on a minimum six thousand square foot lot.
But District A is not six thousand square?
I know, yes.
So when we talk about that we're not going to change underlying zoning, like, they can't coexist, right?
We can remodel it at the current density. In fact, we had that modeled at one point at the current density, or the current, sorry, not the current density, the current zoning standards, that was an earlier model. So at the last couple of meetings, we've been trying to get to a geography that works, knowing that we can come back and retest the dimensional standards.
Just a clarification?
Yeah.
So the overlay district could say a minimum lot size is six thousand square feet, but the underlying district could still say, this is Zone A, and it's an acre or a half acre, whatever.
Absolutely, yes, and then people have the choice that they want to use one or the other. Because if you've got the base district, if we're, if we're considering an overlay, which is what we've been talking about to date, the base district just stays what it is, and the overlay sits on top, so the property owner can say, I want to use one or the other. But they don't have to use either, they can just stay as they are and not make any change.
You could choose one thing, and your neighbor could choose another thing. So you could have a tiny little cottage, and now your neighbor could have a three-family, and that's not in keeping with the neighborhood.
So then that becomes back to if the direction is to continue with these districts, do we modify the dimensional standards and see what that does? Do we go back and looking at? And so this, this Pine Street number two map shows one single district. In our model, we've kept it to sub-districts, so we can remodel each of those sub-districts with, it's, it's back to that average density. We can remodel both each of these sub-districts with a different set of dimensional standards, depending on what we want to have there. So we don't have to, actually, I'm just going to furze back up on the share again, just so I can illustrate this. We don't have to have them either way, I'm showing them where they're all the same. So if you see here on this screen how they're each in a different column, and right here, these cells are basically merged because we kept them all together, but we can break this out. So we could model Pine Street on twelve thousand square feet, and Morrison Saw Mill at six thousand, and Powderhouse at eight thousand, if you see what I mean, we can vary that, so.
These are larger, they're twenty-two-five.
I'm just giving as an example of the fact that we can vary it by sub-district, that's all.
But I guess like, what I'm hearing, though, overall, is we're not going to change the underlying zoning, but this clearly would change the underlying zoning.
You're not changing the underlying zoning at all, you're putting an overlay on top of that.
That changes the zone.
That allows, yes, that has somebody, allows somebody to do something different. But the question is how different? I think what you're, what I'm hearing from you is that you don't want it to be that different, so I think that becomes the question.
I'm just clarifying, because what I keep hearing is that we're not changing the underlying zoning, but you're changing new zoning. You're putting something on top of it that's changing the zone. So I guess it's semantics, in my opinion.
I see what you're saying, yes. It, you are, by putting the overlay on top, you're allowing somebody to have a different choice from their base zoning. You can do that two different ways. You can say that the only thing that's different is we're allowing multifamily as-of-right under these conditions. Or you can do that and say, we'd like to vary the dimensional standards, but to your point, you could go back and say, look, we're putting the overlay here, but we want to keep the same dimensional standards. The only change we want to make is that multifamily, allowing that multifamily as-of-right, in which case, there wouldn't be a difference between the base standards and the overlay standards in that sub-district.
Well, I think when, another thing that's, you know, marched in this town that is our lots are subservient and they're not conforming, but actually, if you take Pine Street number two and you just start on the south-westernly side and you go down, there actually are, the first one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots are actually, if they were in District G, they would be six thousand square feet, and they would be conforming, but they're not, they're District A, which they're massively under, you know, underconforming. So then my next point is, so if you took those one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots, which are about six thousand square feet each, and those seven lots add up to be a little bit more than an acre, you know, we say fifteen units per acre, but if you actually just say, okay, this house can be a three-family now, this can be a three-family, this can be a three-family, we're actually talking about twenty-four units per acre on that little, the first seven houses that I just calculated, correct?
So obviously, I'd have to add it all up, but yes, if you look at this, I've put on the screen Pine Street, just so you can see the sub-district. So we've actually got a calculated density right now of twelve units per acre across this whole sub-district, because to your point, those smaller lots are to the, sort of the lower part of that district. As you move up, you have some larger lots, so there's an offset there. Yeah, the model models each parcel individually, so we have actually mapped that unit capacity out for communities. I think we're waiting to find out, are we at the right geography before we do that? It's a lot of work, but we can map it out and say, okay, the unit capacity is this on this parcel according to Residency or the assessor's data, this is what's on there now, what's the difference? We can certainly do that analysis at the appropriate point.
Well, I pointed, we're saying fifteen units per acre, but if this was actually built out, the first seven units, you'd say twenty-four units.
You'd be so surprised, we did this in a community once where we were showing existing build, actually, we've done it in two different communities, where we show existing buildings. One of my colleagues did a guessing game and said, how dense is this building? And it was like a three-family on a ten thousand square foot lot. Well, that's a lot more dense than you think it is. They had a couple of mixed-use buildings that were tiny little buildings, and were something like twenty-two or twenty-three.
So you didn't take one of these lots and say, what does a three-family look on it? Can we get four and a half parking spots on it?
We did, actually, but not quite in the way that you say. So we understood that there is an existing zoning rule that allows you to go up to three units in an existing building if you can have the parking lots. We actually modeled that out, I don't have the data with me.
But these units are like twenty-four hundred square foot, so that's not going to work, right? So you need a thousand square feet per unit.
You need a thousand square feet.
I mean, I kind of understand this, so what we're modeling just isn't reality, is what my question is.
The, so that's a really good point, and I think that's important for people to understand, I'm glad you brought that up. So there's two things that go into that. One is the model, like all zoning, doesn't look at what's on the lot now. So all zoning assumes a blank slate.
But you, in turn, use things that we have on paper for laws to justify, this is what we modeled it for.
Let me, let me finish on that. So it's all zoning, your existing zoning, new zoning, whatever, assumes a blank slate, so it doesn't care what's on the lot now. What we tried to do was a combination of using your existing zoning to test things. Again, we were trying to get to geography, knowing that we could always change the dimensional standards. We made some variations. So for example, we took your four units per lot restriction off, because otherwise, you weren't going to have any sort of capacity, and we couldn't test it at all. It's also important to understand that there's a lot of other factors that go into actual production beyond what the model can model. So we're not considering topography. You have quite a bit of topography, especially in this area of towns, it's again, how the buildings fit on the lot, the model can't deal with that. So when you start talking about, okay, there's this zoning that exists, and I own property, and I want to develop something on that property, as with any zoning, there's going to be height restrictions, there's going to be setbacks, but there's also going to be the unique characteristics of the parcel itself. The compliance model is basically a build-out analysis that takes a certain amount of input and says, based on this input, this is what we're calculating as unit capacity. If somebody were to go and actually apply for a development, they might not be able to get to the number of units that say, that the model says could be there, because there are all those other factors that are going into actually developing property.
I, I get that, but you're using assumptions that don't apply to that district.
So we can change those assumptions and make them apply to the district and come back and tell you what that looks like.
I, I think that's important, because what I'm hearing is that we're not changing underlying zoning, but we're going to change overlying zoning, so like, maybe we say that. Instead of we're not changing zoning, underlying, we're going to change over, so I mean, that's, that's a big deal. And I guess back to Newport Park.
Yeah.
It was brought up a few meetings ago, that this is age-restricted, so why is this back in?
So it is, so you're absolutely correct that it's age-restricted. I had my research team delve into the deeds. It was restricted by a vote of town meeting, the vote is attached to the deed. The vote is attached to the deed, although the deed itself doesn't say this is age-restricted. It refers back to that vote. We understand from the research that we have found to date, first of all, that you'll want to talk to town council, always, but second of all, that such a restriction could potentially be lifted by town meeting. It is not in the model as excluded land, and so if the town wants to continue to model it as part of the strategy, it can certainly do so. But I would strongly recommend talking to town council about taking, town meeting voting to take that age restriction off if you want to go forward with it. I think what we, I would also recommend is that when the draft goes to HLC in July or their 90-day review process before town meeting, that we also ask them their thoughts on that.
There's also a few condos closer here that I know are age-restricted.
Further down in the.
On Pine Street.
On Pine Street that are within the borders?
Correct.
Okay, they're deed-restricted, okay, that wasn't brought to our attention, we can have a look at that.
So does your, I mean, this, there's the second thing that's been brought to your attention. Does this not find information, wait to bring everything to your attention?
The layers that we have from the state identifying excluded land, if that data, that deed restriction is not part of the information from the state, then we don't necessarily know that it exists. We don't have the scope to look at the deed restrictions on every property in town. So we do rely as consultants on knowledge from people in the town to do exactly as we just said today, is bring something to our attention, so appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I add on to that question?
I did see Sarah with her hand up and she hasn't had a chance to speak, so I thought I might.
Let me just stop this so you can see her.
We've heard the opportunity.
Hi there. Thank you to the task force for all their hard work and to Emily for your thorough presentation tonight, that's very informative. I wanted to just ask Emily if she feels that the state will be fine with the parking restrictions that are being discussed by the proposal, one and a half spaces per unit. Is that something you feel is, that the state is, is fine with?
If I may answer, yes, that is, I think that's reasonable, given what we've seen elsewhere. So typically for units that are closer to the train station, we look at lower parking units, but 1.5 is within the discussion that I've seen in other communities. I haven't seen anybody call that out. If you were, if you were requiring three parking spaces per unit, I would definitely be worried about 1.5. That, that's within the range. I've seen, recently I've seen 0.7 in a much, much more urbanized area than Gloucester. I haven't seen that, sorry, Manchester. I was in Gloucester about 15 minutes before I arrived here, so my apologies. Much more urbanized than Manchester. I haven't seen too many above 1.5 at this point. Maybe a few, two.
Okay, that's great, because I, I just sat on a, there was an early DHCD call where they asserted that you wouldn't need any parking, and I think that's, I think we all agree that that's not consistent with what our needs are in Manchester. So thank you for that clarification, it's important and it's something we hear over and over, so really important to know that each unit will have parking requirements in order to get the as-of-right designation. Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Laura?
Emily and the task force, thank you so much for your excellent work. It's really very thoughtful and you've run through a lot of scenarios, so it's very helpful just to see the presentation tonight and kind of walk through the different models. I have some questions about the Calvin property, which I understand is in the LCD, is that right? As for this scenario. And so do all, I have a couple of questions related to that. Do all the scenarios use the LCD or are there some that do not use the LCD? That's question number one. Do you, do you count on that for all of these, do you need the requirements for compliance?
When we, yes, the area for all of the outside, the half-mile radius area, those were all in the LCD. We had looked at some very early on that were a little bit closer to the train station, but then, and sort of going back and forth, this is the area that eventually got settled on. We looked at a couple of different parcels in the area and this was going to be the last in the model.
Okay. So because of its different nature than the existing density and historic settlement patterns of the downtowns, can you or have you already looked at that for, you know, if you increase its density or you add some, you work within the 55 height requirements, say, to move up or down the density, the desired density of what's happening in the area that is, in the station area or in the existing historic downtown? Have you kind of run some different models with that in mind?
Yeah, it's a good question. We run a range of models. We already reduced the height limitation to two and a half stories for this area.
In the LCD also.
Yeah, in the LCD, just to see what that would do. Obviously, we can change that again. We kept the, because the five-acre district, or five-acre requirement for the LCD at that that, we left that in, but we can certainly also think about whether or not it would be subdivided and change that. We have, I actually played around with a couple of different options for the open space requirements and the building coverage. And then the last thing I did, because I wanted to test really quickly what would happen if it were 100 units, is I just put a unit cap on it and said, you know, it's a single parcel, so what happens if I put a unit cap of 100 on it? That's obviously too low. I think 199, based on feedback, is probably too high. So, you know, is there something else that would work better? And then again, plug it back in and see how it works if you ask the district. So I think there's a lot of tailoring that should be done to that. The other thing, and you know, it goes to your developments, the fact that it's not the same pattern as the lower historic part of Manchester, is this idea of, you know, should the development standards be different?
Right.
Because it's a sub-district, it could be, so you could have deeper setbacks because it's a larger single parcel, you could require different levels of visibility from the road, certainly access to it is going to be different. So I do think that you could have a different set of development standards, possibly design diagrams as well for this, because it is very different from the others.
Yeah, it does seem like that has potential for that area of being a different quality and with a kind of critical mass of units to actually create a neighborhood, a new neighborhood of its own, right? And to think about what the design standards would be for that. My last question on that is regarding affordable housing, can you speak to the LCD and is there a potential to gain some capital A affordable housing, given this, you know, number of units and so forth in that particular parcel?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So the HLC, the compliance guidelines restrict the amount of affordable housing you can have in the as-of-right to 10% of units at 80% of AMI, basically. So there's a couple of things you can do. Obviously, you can do that. You can do an economic feasibility analysis, which is what our TCG associates will do. And what that does is test higher levels of affordability and see if they're feasible within the community. And if so, you can, you know, require that, because you've got that backup. HLC requires it if you're going. And by higher levels, that can either be a higher percentage of units or it can be deeper levels of affordability, since they're 80% AMI, 60% or something like that. The other thing that you can do, and this might be more appropriate for this as opposed to the within the station area districts, I think it's a conversation, is you could allow a density bonus or a height bonus in this area for a deeper level of affordability. I've seen some communities look at doing that and they'll say, you know, for X percent, you have extra story or extra number of units. Or again, some of the communities I worked with, 80%, because it's, for them, it's based on Boston Cambridge Metro. 80% doesn't do much for that particular community, so they've talked about maybe we allow a lower level, so the 60%, which is more reasonable for our community in exchange for the extra units or the extra height.
So that would be really interesting if we're able to model how much we could gain in affordable housing by a density, you know, density bonus or some of these different affordability rates would be great to see, because it's clearly a priority for the town to increase capital A affordable housing, and it seems like a great opportunity to do it.
Yeah, and we can use that, we can use the compliance model to do that. So for example, it's modeled at two and a half stories now, we can model it at three and a half stories, or we can model it at, say, just to split the difference, 150 units and then model it at 175 units, or whatever it is we want to do. We can test that in a couple of different ways and see what that looks like.
It'd be interesting to just, if you let the 55-feet height requirement stay, just for the purpose of the model, and then you looked at that and to see, to quantify how many capital A affordable units you could realize with these different, you know, affordability limits and possible density thresholds, open space, you know, clustered zoning for open space for density, that would be a really interesting thing to kind of prove out, to see how far we could get to our goals of being affordable housing and kind of kill two birds with one stone here.
Yes, and your, your mention of open space is really interesting, because on these bigger lots, you do have that option of encouraging the cluster development and then thus preserving a wider contiguous buffer of the open space. And given the amount of open space, just, you know, for everybody to see on screen now, the amount of open space next to this parcel, that could be a really interesting strategy to think about, sort of basically creating as-of-right cluster district and figuring out the areas around that. So it might have made my life a little bit more difficult.
Okay.
It's a reasonable strategy for, for the town to consider for that parcel, it would make a lot of sense.
Great, thank you.
Mary?
So I have a handful of questions. Is that okay?
What's a handful? Laura?
So going back on Christine's question, with the 6,000 overlay versus 22,500 actual zoning, are you still honoring the setbacks that are within the district? So if you're in District A, you're honoring the 50-foot setback or 40-foot setback or whatever it is in the new overlay?
We haven't gotten to that point yet. So the model asks you to input setbacks, but they don't actually make a difference to the model. So I think the setback question is absolutely open for discussion, and so that's something. And I think you had mentioned earlier the idea, somebody has, you know, a smaller house and then there's a larger house that goes in. So, you know, keeping the setback from the street, development standards requiring buffers, there's, there's some other things that can happen with that to reduce that, potentially reduce that impact. And all of those are still up for discussion, because they're not part of the compliance model. So those go into that level of control that the compliance model can't actually model.
And I thought I had heard at one of the task force meetings, modeling with two off-street parking spaces, 6,000-square-foot lot, I would recommend that we try to do the two off-street parking. We have very limited parking in these areas, and that would only exacerbate off-street parking. I don't know any family that has less than two cars, so I think if we could look at that. And with the affordable piece, if it's currently 10%, so you would, somebody would have to build six units or more to trigger one unit, correct? So if we've got all these 6,000-square-foot lots, we've got three units, three units, three units, we're not triggering any affordable unit.
That is correct. So I actually had this conversation with HLC earlier today about another project. The sample zoning has a requirement that you not round down. So if you are at 10 units or above at your threshold, they're okay with you rounding down. I had one community that had their threshold at five, and, sorry, rounding up, you can't round up. I had one community that their threshold is five, and if you round up to one unit, you're at 20%, which is not allowed, it has to be 10. So yes, if you have six units or 10 units as your threshold, anything that's built underneath your threshold does not produce affordable housing. So I think that's where your question about outside the half-mile radius comes in importance, if you're looking to generate affordable housing.
And then with some of these districts, the Pine Street, the Valentine Summer, they, they get into the National Historic Register. Did the task force consider honoring that and staying away from those zones? It doesn't look like it, so I'm just kind of questioning, I mean, we're looking at the historic district, but not the National Historic Register.
Mary, we are in purpose lifting every historic district out of it. That's why these, like the little sawtooth along Bridge Street or Central Street.
So if I look at the GIS system, so if you look at the Tappan Summer, the, that one parcel on Tappan is actually in the National Historic Register district?
Which parcel, Mary?
It shouldn't be any.
No, it's not.
There should not be any.
So if you, it's the, the one that's on Tappan and C Street?
Valentine moving.
Valentine.
The little.
That's the store?
No. It's, it's just in the register, it's in that district. So same with the two properties on C Street and then some of the properties on Pine Street are in.
It's in the National Historic, the federal registry?
So we have an, not an overlay, we, in the GIS system, you can look at the national, you can look at Manchester Historic District.
Right.
And then there's areas marked out that are National Historic Register.
So people have done this on their own to their.
No, the, the federal government has defined, this is an area that if somebody wants to apply.
Eligible.
If they want to apply. Yes. So they've defined it as an area that's eligible for historic.
Eligible, okay.
So it's not the same as the Manchester Historic District. I'm just questioning if we're trying to maintain a historic character.
But if people.
If we should look at that as protecting those areas as well.
When we put these together, none of the properties should be in either of the districts. So I will have to check, but when I drew these.
I can send you the maps. I mean, this is just off the GIS from the town website, so.
So that's what, that's what we used, so.
So certainly, we can check and if something needs to be drawn, because we can draw, that's part of the reason we test these, right, is to say, oh, I didn't know that, or what about this? There have been a lot of conversations with the task force, well, what about this building? And I've had to ask, what is building, you mean? Because sometimes the name's a little bit older. It might be. So we can certainly test, we'll double check. I can also pull the macros, which is the Mass Historic Commission data layer, I can pull that from GIS and overlay it as well, and we can double check if that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a decision the town makes, either we want to, you know, honor those districts or not. So, and then my, I guess my last question is basically, is this a presentation asking if the planning board agrees with these as the overlays? Or is this just informational?
Yeah, I think it was just an informational transfer, is what we're going to try to do with, you know, how that we met, try to have a properly posted meeting with you guys to move forward. I think we want to schedule public hearings and public forums, try to get the word out. And then I, now that the board has some idea of what task force is presenting to, you know, review this stuff, and we should meet again and discuss it further. I mean, does task force have any other ideas on what you want to do to move forward on this?
So we would like to move forward, but we don't want to do that if the planning board is going to tell us these districts are ridiculous, start over again. So we'd like to know, we'd like to get some feedback, is this, are these reasonable to pursue or should we start over? I think that's the question. And secondly, do you want the task force to continue working on these or is this something that the planning board should take over at this point?
I think it's in the best interest of the town, that the task force, who has been working on this for many months, maybe a year now, to continue to support the planning board, you know what you've been doing. You've done a fantastic job from a very diverse group, and my opinion is that I think we would want you to continue.
Laura had a question.
Laura? Totally unrelated to the current discussion, another math question, I think. The parcel that is, I think called Newport Park.
Yes.
The outline in brown. So that also seems like it has some different physical characteristics than other, than either the station district or the LCD. than either the station district or the LCD that are kind of unique to it because it is entirely, well, on three sides surrounded by town open space. And so, and I know there is existing development there. Unrelated to whether we make a different choice about age restrictions, that seems like when you get down to the level of the physical setbacks and what the rules are for each kind of sub-district or neighborhood, that would be an important one to cluster and preserve open space because it is such an important, it's one of the densest part of town. And so it's a great resource for, ecological resource and recreational resource for the community. And so I would just advocate for, you know, I don't, I don't know whether that changes the density at all in the count of the units, but in terms of the physical development of that, of that sub-district, that it should be looking to preserve open space as a primary goal.
Yeah, that's a great point. And again, same thing, it's, because we're calling out a separate sub-district, it can have different rules, it can have different standards. So it's one of the reasons that once, you know, we grouped this under the Pine Street to, as a single district for that contiguity requirement.
Right.
We kept them as the separate sub-districts because we did recognize that they have very different characteristics.
So this could all be part of the contiguous minimum requirement, but each of those colors could have a different physical setback or.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, just conceptually, if we start with, you know, Sixty Pine, the last, the first one on that, we go down and we get to twenty-four units per acre and say they're all built out. So at that point, none of these are going to relate to our SHI, right? So then now if these units are all built out, as is, as anticipated in this new zoning, we would be behind an additional two units on our affordable housing inventory. Is that correct?
If, if you're allowing them to only be built out as three units, yeah. Those, that would be. You're, you're, sorry, if those were the only things that happened, right? If you didn't have any other development elsewhere that was over that. But certainly those units, those parcels would not contribute.
I'm just making sure there's no other conversations that have happened between you and the state. You say you have like a hotline to the state.
No, I just happen to be, they do take questions from consultants. I just happen to be on a call with them with another community.
I'm just making sure that, I haven't heard that answer, so I just want to make sure that. And so now, just to clarify, you are promoting, because you're including Newport Park in this plan, to go to town meeting and vote to have the affordable, I mean, the senior deed restrictions removed?
I'm not promoting, I'm just saying.
But by including that in the zone, that's what would have to be done to include this?
So that's what I would want to check with HLC because the overlay might, I don't, I don't think the overlay overrides that deed restriction. So I think it is an open question. I'm just saying I think that the pathway would be that town. Based on what we, we, just my team has researched, I think that would have to be the pathway, but I'm not recommending it. I'm just saying that's what we've seen, so.
Okay, but I think you said the pathway to like the Gordon College land would have to be, you know, you know, changing deeds and things like that. So, I mean, you've talked about other properties.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point. For the Gordon College, that is currently excluded land, which means technically it can't be modeled for capacity. We have a way in the model of overriding that, so we can test. But it's absolutely true. I've had this conversation with HLC last fall, I think, on a couple of completely different projects. Excluded land would have to be no longer excluded by the date that you needed to comply in order to be part of that strategy. So just for Gordon College, say, that would have to not be under the private educational ownership that is currently making it exclude my land.
So this deed restriction for senior housing isn't good enough? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you can't have age restriction, and so.
But we modeled it. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand.
We modeled it because it's not currently listed as excluded land. Had I not known that there was a deed restriction, you know, I would have just gone on. But I was told there was a deed restriction, so we researched it.
So have you, I, I haven't heard you. Have you discussed the Shingle Hill property as using that as a district?
I do not recall here in Shingle Hill. Where is that?
So it's the Purpous Forty-B property on the other side of the Calvin properties.
Okay, that wasn't, that was not one of the ones we've asked, or we looked at.
Is there a reason why, if it's going to be built?
I wasn't asked to model it, that's the only reason.
And then is there a reason why we haven't looked at the self-signaling land itself?
Yes, I can answer that. It's fifty acres, so that would be zoned for four hundred units or something, which.
But, I mean, in the same conversations, I've heard you guys talk about being paper compliant. So if we're going to have parking lots and buildings and lavatories, it wouldn't be fifty units. And just as you were talking about breaking off land at Gordon College, I mean, it all can be done if it's chosen to be that way, right?
Anything can be done, yeah.
Right, so I mean, the golf course, this, I mean, they all could be done. So we've talked about, you've talked about in detail about doing it for the Gordon College land. Can we get it done in time? So, I mean, if the conversation is they need workforce housing, perhaps it should just, can't they do it on themselves?
They haven't asked us to.
Well, can we ask them, is the question? Sounds like there's lots of conversations that happen outside of these meetings. So I'm asking the question.
Excuse me, is, are you accusing us of something?
No, no, I mean, no. There's letters from Gordon College that are going around, so there are.
They're all public, they're.
Yes, there's outside of these meetings, yes, I'm saying that. And yes, I'm asking, can that conversation happen?
And what, what difference would that make, Christina, to you if that conversation happened?
I'm asking, can it happen?
Well, why would we take that step? Is it going to make a difference to you or someone else?
So I think the land, the fifty acres that it's serving would be on the same property. If they need workforce housing, perhaps the land should be on theirs. I mean, I think it's, I'm out of the box. I mean, it's their land, they have a lot of land. Use their own land if they need workforce housing.
They have not approached us and asked us to zone any of that.
Did Calvin properties approach?
No, they did not.
Okay, just checking.
So let's, let's try to get some consensus here. Does the board have any major objections to these four zoning overlay districts? And does the board want to see any others included or any changes made? Just for consensus, is the board pretty happy with this? Or do we want to look at others? Or do we want to hone what's here?
Sarah, raise your hand up.
Dan?
Sarah, there, Craig, pass your hand up.
Sarah, sorry, let's see, got a bell.
I think for my consensus to answer your question, Ron, is that the task force has done a lot of work. They have convinced me that they've put forward a strong set of districts to be looked at further. So I think we should encourage them to continue to refine and move forward with these. I also, to just to circle back on the prior comment, I think we're trying to move forward here in good faith to comply with this challenging mandate. We're not trying to look at every eventuality and, and, I, I mean, I think the team has looked at every eventual, or every opportunity and has thought carefully about how to meet the goals that they set out in the beginning, which we hearken back to those. I think it's a really strong set of goals. And so I commend them for putting these forward. Also, just, I guess I'll stop there, thanks.
Mary?
So two, two avenues. I, I would like to, when we have a joint meeting with the task force, to take a step back because when we initially voted in the task force, and I have an email from the town administrator, they, they were to investigate two tracks. One track was complying and the other, so on how we might comply and on how we, if we decide not to comply. So I think it's important that we still follow those two tracks. I know there's a consensus out there that, you know, grant money and we don't want to get grant, you know, we don't want to lose grant money. But I think it's important to do the financial analysis balance that what we've received over the past ten-plus years, which is that six hundred thousand, to what potentially going forward and what the impact would be to other costs, to the schools, to the infrastructure, to the water, police, you know. So we set out saying we were going to investigate two tracks. And I think, you know, we are still going to town meeting with a yes or no vote. And so I think residents should have all of the data to do a yes or no vote. So I, I will, I don't know when we're slated to get that financial analysis done. Hopefully when we meet, that would be great. The, you know, because there's obviously both macro and micro level concerns wrapped up into that. As far as the districts, I know it's really hard thinking of districts and where they would go. I do have concerns when we're dipping into single-family zoning when we, when the task force has done such a hard job trying to stay out of it. So there are homes that are single-family that are impacted. I think if we could try to stay away from that. I think the LCD is problematic in the sense that it could be a lot of housing, especially if the Forty-B were to go through also. So with your numbers, you're saying one ninety-nine. I think you're going to hopefully bring that down. But even if it's a hundred and fifty, a hundred, still looking at the hundred and thirty-two units with the potential Forty-B, that's a lot of units in the commercial district. I think we should really try to keep the commercial district for commercial. So maybe if there's other areas in town we could look at, I think it would be good to have some options in that to understand the benefits and the pros and the cons if, if, if other districts are looked at. And maybe these will come back and look really great, but I, I just haven't seen other examples, so. Thank you.
So I disagree with, it's either comply or not comply. I think we have an obligation to the town to find a way to comply with the law. It doesn't ostensibly hurt the character of the town. Now, if people want to say no, I don't think it's the planning board's job to say no. I think it's our job to find a way to comply with the least harm to the town. Otherwise, we lose grant money and the state can zone whatever they want. They can come in here and zone, take away all this work, in my opinion.
So I'm just asking for data to, so we understand the picture.
Okay.
So, Mary, you drew out the figure of six hundred thousand. And can you tell me about that figure?
So the six hundred thousand equates to the three grants that are in the law, the three grant buckets that are in the law, the Mass Works, the, there I got it right here, the local capitals, VALL grants, something like that. And then there's a third one. The guidelines list out thirteen other ones as they kept changing the guidelines.
Those aren't in your six hundred?
No.
Okay.
So the six hundred is five hundred thousand that we got in dredging and one hundred thousand that was a wastewater treatment study to decommission and to potentially build housing there. We have a list of grants that I have tried to map to the thirteen additional buckets that they added to the guidelines, but I haven't been able to do that. So I'm not clear that they're all fall under those buckets. And I think, you know, some grants you might not apply for if you knew it was tied to something that you, you wanted to do or didn't want to do. So the six hundred thousand is just what has been over the past ten-plus years.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just add something on the grants? I didn't realize this until relatively recently, but a fourth one was added to the law. Just so you know, the Housing Works Infrastructure Program was also added to the law, not the thirteen grants that were out in August, but to the actual law itself. I don't know if that has any implications for you or not, but I'd like to know.
So what is it called?
The Housing, Housing Works Infrastructure Program, established in Section twenty-seven of Chapter twenty-three B.
So did they add it? Because I haven't seen that on their website.
That was added. If you check Section three A on NGL's actual website with all the general laws, it's in there. Somebody told me last week, so.
Dan?
I think you've made an interesting cutoff on when we consider the grants because we have a three-point-five million dollar grant for, under Mass Works, that we have received in the last year. It should change your balance.
So that's a new one. I'm just going off of data we had when the task force was formed.
It's a new one and it's very significant.
So, so my understanding is that's three-point-five million for self-signaling and then they will reimburse the town one million dollars because it's a matching grant?
You admitted a significant portion. If you're asking Becky Jake's select board, if you're asking for facts, Mary, please present facts and not just segments of them. It's, it's really disingenuous to only present what you feel should be seen.
So I apologize, I, I have not received word that we've received that three-point-five million dollars.
Who are you getting the word from?
The town administrator. The town administrator.
And is he just sending you everything or are you requesting? I'm just, I'm trying to understand why, why what you bring forth is always in a negative to finding a common solution that's good for everybody. What, what is, what is it that you are so afraid is going to happen specifically?
I'm not afraid and I, unless I misspoke, I believe I was just asking to have data so that residents can understand how this will either impact tax rate, property values, in a positive or a negative.
And again, my point is, data is great. Present the facts, not portions or your perspective or what you think is the fact. Please present facts, Mary.
I will do my best, Becky.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
I'm sorry, Ron, I was just looking at the slides in our packet, our planning board packet called Slides for Forum. Are this, is this what was presented in the forty-eight forum? The last slide in the packet, you show examples of density and Chapter forty-eight, Section three A, where do we go from here? Maybe this is an older forum, but it's in our planning board packet. And the last slide shows the MBTA task force members, sorry, that second to last slide, grants received in the past ten years, totaling five-point-three million dollars with another six million dollars or so in the next few years that are anticipated. And the estimated percent tax rate increase additional every year, two-point-eleven percent. I think that's assuming that we forego those grants. So that, I just wanted to ask the source of the information. It looks like it's on Manchester by the Sea letterhead. And so I assume that there was some information to back that up and then someone put it together.
I believe Greg Fetterstil presented this at last last summer.
Okay, so that's, that's nicely stated. It's in our packet, everyone had a chance to review it. It's called Slides for Forum.
Three-point-five in the total that you just read or is it future?
The three-point-five is anticipated.
Anticipated.
It's one of the anticipated grants. And the five-point-three million that have already been received is the last ten years. On average, ten-year average, five hundred thousand. And the estimated percent tax rate increase, two-point-eleven percent every year. And I assume that means if we would forego the grant. So I just wanted to put that information out there because it has been presented by the town on letterhead. And I also just wanted to say that we talk a lot about negative impacts of this housing. We, our, our town changes and continues to change. It's not encased in amber. It's a beautiful historic town. I think the task force is doing really hard and good work to preserve the things that are special about it and preserve the resources in it. We also do need housing. Our kids can't afford to stay here, new families can't afford to move in. Single-family housing as a right doesn't mean no change will happen. Change will continue to happen. We see tear downs, we see houses that maybe. We see houses that maybe a family bought, you know, decades ago for a very different amount than it's selling for now. And so it does change the character of the neighborhoods. It just continues to change. That's okay. Change isn't always bad. But I think that we should maybe just think about this as not a bad thing, but we're trying to allow housing to happen for people of different incomes, different family types. Multi-family housing isn't a bad thing. It can be a good thing. It can be put in the right place. People, we can put controls around it just as we do with other zoning requirements. Let's say setback and dimensional requirements, we can put in design standards. But I think that we should welcome new housing of different diversity, for people of different diversity and family types, and have controls over it that allow it to, the possibility for it to happen. We're not going to say, we're going to go out and build this housing, but we're allowing for the possibility of it. And we're putting controls that allow it to be, future development to be under our guidelines at the town. I think it's working hard together with this really diverse cross-section of people coming together to, to just allow the possibility to happen. I think it's, there's a housing crisis and I just want to say, you know, it's not, it's not all negative impact. I think there's a lot of good here that we're doing. And I think we also have the potential to look at affordable housing, capital A, which we also need more of. We didn't get to this point of being behind in affordable housing by allowing multi-family housing. It's just by nature of decades and decades of single family housing that we're here. So I, I really see the good in this. I thank the task force for the work. I think it's excellent work. I, you know, I raised some questions about different types of sub-district controls, which I think are important to look at in the future. But my recommendation would be to take the task force recommendations on the districts they've put before us, do those additional studies and come back to us with, you know, what you find next. But I, I support the work and I support the concept of responsible zoning to allow multi-family housing by right. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So one thing I do want to say, if we do go ahead with this, I think the next step would be some kind of a forum, much the way the rotunda was done, to discuss this big district that we've talked about, the Pine Street, Powderhouse, Morse Court, Newport site and get people to ask questions and have comments about it. We could do it as part of one of our, our next task force meeting. You just start getting some input. I don't know if the board would, would like, think that's a good idea or?
I think good idea.
I just want to add to something that Chris said earlier. In our work on the design guidelines, we focused on the town proper. And we stopped when we got to the issue of the LCD. Because clearly, whatever design guidelines we apply to the town aren't probably not going to be the ones we want to apply to the LCD. And this seems like a planning board issue. We really could use some guidance from the planning board in order to go forward with some design guidelines to provide some guidance on any development we view on the other side of 128, actually for any development beyond a certain size and away from the downtown.
Okay, so I think.
Need to make one comment and thank you for pointing that out. Because on the MBTA website, as in our packet, as in the presentation, the 3.5 million is in the anticipated grants. So when I spoke about the 600,000, I'm going off public documents and I do continually get bashed by certain people. And I do wish it would stop. And I'm sorry if asking for data is viewed as a negative. That's how I make decisions and so I just wanted to clear that up.
Sarah?
Oh, I just wanted to go back to the design guideline question and a question for Emily that I was unclear about. You said that the design guidelines couldn't be just for the, I believe I heard you say, two things. One is that they are drafted by the special permit or the oversight, I guess by the planning board. However, however you put it. And then the other question, the question I have is they have to apply to all properties in the district evenly, even if it's not a multi-family district? Is that correct or did I mishear that? And then.
No, I think maybe.
Richard's question about the LCD.
I think maybe I, I wasn't clear when I spoke other than the mishearing. So the design guidelines can't make it more difficult to do multi-family than another use. In other words, you don't want the design guidelines or HLC doesn't want the design guidelines to effectively prohibit the multi-family use because of the requirements. So that's where having design guidelines that aren't clear, that aren't understandable, that are subjective, effectively reduces that as a right use because there's, you know, there's no clear path to that as a right use. So as we think about developing the design guidelines, we just want to make sure that they're not tripping into the, for example, you can only use trees that are 200 years old to create the clavards for the historic building. Probably not going to be accepted because those board widths aren't around anymore. But something that says that, you know, the, an infill building or an addition has to be consistent with the, in, in style or in massing with existing additions in the area or the strong horizontal lines of the new infill have to be consistent. That would probably, as I understand it now, that would probably be accepted. So I'm continuing to research what other communities are doing.
Can I answer another?
And the design guidelines are adopted by the planning board? Sorry to interrupt you, Chris. Are the plan, design guidelines adopted by the planning board? And strategically, would it make sense to adopt them in advance of town meeting? So that people understand that this is a?
So I think it's very important, Sarah, that the, the design guidelines only apply to properties that are being developed under the terms of the overlay district. The base zoning stays the same. So if you have a single family house and you want to renovate it, you don't have to comply with the design guidelines. It's only if you're doing multi-family and under the terms of the overlay district that you would come for a site plan review.
Right. It's, it's the overlay district that governs it. And then to the point of adopting, who adopts the design guidelines? You can do it two different ways. You could put them in the zoning. The language that I quoted earlier establishes the ability for a planning board to adopt the, so it basically sits in the zoning and points to the planning board being able to adopt the design guidelines. It's usually done after a public hearing. It keeps it outside the zoning. I tend to like that because it allows the planning board to adopt or to modify the design guidelines without having to go back to town meeting if they're not finding they're working. Remembering that town meeting obviously votes on the overall zoning and requirements there. Timing, I could go either way. I think that is up to the judgment of the, the planning board, the select board, input from the task force as to whether or not those should be adopted prior to town meeting or at least ready and publicly available prior to a town meeting and adopted afterwards. I, I think that's a community discussion and decision. But certainly you could do either of those.
I just have an observation. So when you look at Milton and their issue was, you know, one area of Milton was burdened and the rest was excluded and they, you know, came to an uprising. I mean, when you look at the maps, I mean, Manchester isn't that much different. When we said we were going to try and stay away from single family districts, you did to a certain extent, but the people on C Street and Pine Street. So I just, just a comment. I, if I was looking at this and I was in some of these districts, which I'm not far off on one, I would say this is not maybe equitable. Why, did you look at each district and say, maybe everyone should take a bit of the burden? I'm, I'm just, this is just an idea. And then I did see some chat questions. So are you going to offer up questions to the public?
Not a public hearing.
Oh, I understand this, but there's lots of people that have commented that it are part of the public.
They're on boards.
Okay, so that, that's different if you're not on a committee or this board.
I wasn't taking public comment tonight. That's what the forum and public hearings are for. That is my plan. I think we've kind of, I think we've kind of.
I just, I want to follow up on what Richard was asking the board to do and kind of goes to some of the comments that were made about the, particularly the LCD parcel. So the LCD parcel is 7, 7.6 acres or 6.8, depending where you get it. But at 15 units an acre, that's 105, that's seven acres or 140 at 20 units an acre. So right now it's modeled at 199. So in order to do a development like that, realistically, we can't do open, open space residential, cluster development, you're not talking about that. And what Richard was saying is you can have a variety of high-density housing constructed in different formats and in different scales and in different styles. And that's, I think what Richard was trying to say was for the planning board to think, if we're doing a high-density housing neighborhood, what is that style you'd like to see? Would you like to see, like you see along Route 128, there are a variety of 40B developments, which are four-story wood frame buildings clustered around a central courtyard, sometimes with a little community center in the middle, parking kind of scattered about. The bigger ones sometimes will have the structured parking. Again, to get the density here, there may have to be some of that. But it can be, if you pay attention, there's different styles. And some are, you know, you know, clap, look like clavboard with porches and balconies and that type of thing. That's quite common. Others are brick. Others are a mix of some townhouses along with an apartment-style buildings. Try and create a little village type. Again, we don't have a lot of space. You know, we'll look at modeling some of the, a little more density in the downtown area so that we can reduce that overall density in the back. Talking about before. But I mean, that's the, kind of the feedback that, or the thought that the planning board should look at the, in order to allow the design subcommittee to put together something to, to guide a developer if that ever got developed. So. So I think that's something that the board should think about maybe between now and the next meeting so that you can give the task force and the architectural subcommittee members some guidance on, on what you'd like to, to see there.
Okay, so I've heard the four plans you've submitted, I've heard no major objection from the board on moving forward with this. Any changes, I haven't heard from anyone on the board that major changes to look elsewhere. But if there are, I would send maybe an email to you, to you, Mark, that you can disseminate to the task force. Yeah. We need to continue meeting. This meeting was a little bit of a disconnect, but I think we've made a lot of progress in spite of that. So a couple of things I think regarding this topic is a forum similar to what we held on the zoning forum. I think I would let you guys take the lead on that. The next thing would be a joint meeting with us again, probably in two, three weeks' time. Maybe sooner, I don't know. But are you still meeting regularly?
Yes.
So we would have to find a mutual date that we can all meet. Maybe one of your Thursday meetings, I don't know. Okay, and then to the board on other subject. We are now entering a peer review phase for the self signaling project. The first peer review was scheduled originally for April 8th. I subsequently found out that several members couldn't make that date. Mark has asked to do an email to you guys, which dates can you make? It's important to, for you to attend those meetings because once you miss two, you're out. Can't rule on it. So it's important to nail this schedule down. And I think there's four or six of them, I don't know. Peer review meetings.
Yeah, there's, again, there'll probably at least three main topics. One will be the general engineering of the site. One will be on traffic and one will be on landscaping and lighting and some of the other peripheral items. But then there'll be follow-up meetings. Again, depending on what the review shows and what the comments are from the peer reviewers, there will have to be some follow-up meetings. Again, it can't really project what that would be at this point because they, we haven't received comment letters.
The point is to just find available dates at this point, so.
Yes. So I think we ought to, we're going to just set the peer review date next and then we can work around it with the, I mean, the CST date, the next CST because you can't meet on the 8th.
Some kind of celestial calendar.
Yes.
So I just want to make clarify, right? There's people that are in these zones that have their hands up that you just have no intention on recognizing. That's correct?
I think I, I spoke to you on that. Why are you bringing it up again?
Just to make sure. So when can they be here?
What's your point?
Thursday they can be here?
They can come to task force meeting and accept questions then. This is not a public hearing, Ms. Calisi.
I didn't say it was. I'm just making sure.
No, I mean, I'm trying to, it's, it's, it was for the task force to transmit data to us who you want to have us be in charge of.
Just clarifying, Ron. Just clarifying.
That's what's happened.
Just clarifying.
To the public. I see how your hand raised. It's not a public hearing. But you can go to the task force meeting and have your questions answered then or write to the task force.
I, I thought that at the beginning of this meeting, it was stated that it was public for one of the boards, but not the other. It wasn't for the task force because.
Public hearing has to be duly noted. Wasn't a public. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I just, to the point of being ignored the entire time and putting my comments in the, in the, and, and, and the comment section and, and those being annoyed, it is, it is a bit annoying. But yes, I am in, in one of the districts here, the Valentine to, to summer. And I have questions just around how, what was contemplated when coming up with this zone? I mean, is, is the modeling something that's feasible when you combine three single-family homes with, with the, our company, with some small businesses? All of this would probably have to come together in order to, in order to make the modeled number of units. What was the thinking there and how, and how did you come up with the, with the proposal?
So you'd have to bring that up to the task force. Planning board didn't have any thinking on there. Can't answer that.
It, it seemed like at one point there was somebody there that was commenting on very specific aspects of other zones. So I wonder if that individual is still there and can provide any commentary.
Emily?
So just a reminder that the model calculates unit capacity based on the zoning parameters that were put in there. There is not a production requirement, right? The town doesn't have to produce this. The people who own the properties don't have to produce this. So in terms of feasibility, there's a whole host of development feasibility issues. We talked about some of the physical characteristics, but there's also financial characteristics. So the, the person on screen mentioned a couple of different uses.
So the, the person on screen mentioned a couple of different uses. It would be up to those property owners to decide if the overlay gave them a better financial return than their current uses. So the model can say, we put this overlay district on, this is how the capacity is calculated. It's up to the property owner to decide, A, if they want to do anything, and B, if so, how much they want to do. You could have a property that's modeled for 10 units. The property owner decides, I only want to put four or I don't want to change mine at all. So that's the difference between a build-out model, the, the, on compliance model that calculates possibilities and people's actual choices and putting that into practice.
Thank you. Much time do you have left with us?
Uh, I, I thought you were wrapping up, so I just...
No, I am, but I mean, in the future, meetings...
Um, I'm here with you. I think our contract's to the end of the year, so, um, we, I have to check how many meetings are left, but Chris and Mark, you and I can talk about that.
Okay, so we'll send out notice on when our next meetings are. We, we have nothing scheduled, and the April 8th, I guess, is canceled.
Right, we, we should pick another date right now for the CST. And we should pick a, pick a follow-up date with the task force.
Okay, so you want to pick the date for a joint meeting with the planning board?
With the task force and the planning board.
Yeah, so, um...
But before we do that, we, we should pick the date to follow up with the CST. Because you have to cancel the A's, and, not cancel, but...
We do have to show up and continue the meeting, right? So I need a quorum that day. We need a quorum to come in and say, yay, and...
That's correct.
Unless we want to handle some simple agenda items.
Yes, you need a quorum, um, in order to open the hearing and vote to continue it.
What about April 9th? What about April 9th? I know you floated that out there.
I'm the only one, I think, who can't make the 9th, so.
April 10th, when that starts getting... We need a room.
Yeah.
April 10th?
I'm sorry, I have a work coming in.
April 11th?
I'm gone.
So how many of us can't be here on the 8th?
Um, one, two, and Sarah, three. And that starts, once you miss one, you're going to be better.
I mean, if you don't even have a quorum to meet on the 8th, I mean, it's not the end of the world that I'd have to republish the public hearing notice and we'd have to start at the beginning with CST. Because if you have, how many people can't make the 8th?
I might not be able to make it.
One, two...
I'll be available on Zoom to continue the hearing.
Oh, so Sarah can dial in.
I can probably...
Yeah.
How many of us can dial in?
Uh, I mean, I, I didn't say I wasn't available, so I, I mean, um, so it's other people.
Um, I can't, I, well, the 11th I can't meet, so, sorry. I sent Mark down.
Yep.
So do we have a quorum if it's on Zoom?
Yeah.
No?
Yes.
No.
I guess someone's here.
Oh, you can't make it?
I can.
No.
The 8th?
Yeah.
I can make it.
It's gonna be me and you then.
I'll, I can be here on the 8th.
Well, me, you, Sue, and...
Supportive.
Well, we're here, there's four, we're done.
So...
So the, I don't, it sounds like the 8th works, is my point.
Okay, so you can, oh, you have a quorum to hold the meeting to continue CST?
All right, let's hold it on the 8th.
And then you need to pick the next date.
Yeah. Uh, what was that? I'm sorry.
So...
I'm going to have a regular meeting on the 8th.
The advantage is April has five Mondays, so there is an extra Monday.
So how about the 15th? Is that the...
So you're having CST on the...
That's a holiday.
Just to continue the hearing on the 8th.
April...
16th.
That works. Yeah, that's a conflict with this one I brought, but it probably doesn't matter.
What did you suggest, the 16th?
16th, yeah.
We really need to stick with our holidays.
I can make...
Yep, 16th works for me. Is that for the task joint meeting?
No.
No, we're not doing CST.
CST.
16th?
16th.
16th, you want to make the 16th?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yes. Yes.
Did we just say the select board meets on that day?
I mean, yes.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We've made a policy. We've, we've tried not to, can do that, right? Like, so we have certain weeks.
Is that a public hearing on the 16th? We shouldn't conflict with the select board if it is. Is that the CST?
Yes.
I think that might not be good.
Why is that not good? Yeah, what?
Because if people want to hear the CST public hearing, but also want to attend the plan, uh, select board.
We have all the good stuff. One wants to hear the select.
Yeah, who wants to go to the select board meeting?
Well, I won't stay out of that one, but about the, Wednesday, the 17th.
I don't, why can't we just stick with our weeks? That's a...
I guess the, it's a holiday on Monday.
But that is a, so the 8th is our week. We're every other week, right? So we just, I mean, I schedule one of the published dates.
Oh, that's pass, that's pass.
So 8 and 14 is, um...
The 8th and the 22nd?
22nd.
Well, that's town meeting. No, it's not.
22nd's already on our schedule, so.
Oh, it's, it's a holiday.
So we have to...
So we're meeting on the 8th. And then nobody wants the 16th. Or it would be fine with me.
That's, it's okay with me.
I'm not here. I just, I, I've made arrangements on our normal weeks. So I mean, if we're going to do this, I just feel like we should...
So the 22nd is our regular meeting?
So we ran into this last year, it's Passover. And we moved town meeting because of Passover. Just FYI. I'm not Jewish. I would not be offended, but I'm sure there are people that would be. So I just want to make note of that.
Ron, the other reason that's, that the 16th could work, um, here is that if we do need to take action on a, um, purchase of property, then we need to do it probably before the 22nd.
Oh, she's talking about the town meeting. The 16th would be good because it's before town meeting.
Right.
So for the report that we have to do on that.
Okay.
Right.
So let's do the 16th.
Yep.
I don't think...
You want to do it at 5:30 to help? No, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, outrage in one.
I don't think I'll be back, I'm traveling, so. I'll be in a flight.
Six.
I'm flexible.
6:30?
6:30.
4:16, 6:30. 4:08, 6:30.
Ron, you were doing a really good job of putting like the future meetings at the agenda. Can we try and do that for the next meeting?
Well, until this monkey wrench.
No, but I mean...
Throw out all schedules thrown out.
What?
All these peer review things. Yeah, I'll, I'll...
But I think if you put them out there, people will see them and then if there's an issue, you can, we can know it ahead of time.
Right, I'll refresh this.
Yeah.
Um, let's talk about the next task force date. You're meeting on the 11th of April. Well, that should go up, right? Is that your next meeting on the 4th?
Our next meeting is in the 8th.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're ready to, I don't think we can post in time.
Well, I think also the, the task force after tonight's meeting has some additional work to do, so I think, um...
11th?
Yeah, after that.
Yeah, are you sure for the 11th?
11th, April.
So is the planning board going to the task force or not the task force going to the meeting?
It's a joint meeting.
We're going to have to move. We're going to be a mobile force. Where do you have your meetings?
Here.
Right here.
Well, not a big deal. We just won't have our regular seats.
We can give you your seats.
It could be your meeting.
All right, let's tentatively schedule that. How's that work with everyone? We'll meet with you guys.
Okay.
I'm going to come late to that one, Ron, I have work engagement. But I, I'll just come late. I mean, I might be half an hour late or something. I have a non-negotiable work. Yeah, I'm traveling.
Okay, so we said the 11th. Anything else? I'll take a, uh, Anne?
The task force has asked the planning board for guidance on the LCD. Um, I think it would be hard for you to give us guidance since we haven't had a chance to talk about it beforehand. So in one of your intermediate meetings, could you find time to talk about, um, what your vision of a healthy development in the LCD would be?
Certainly. That might be good for the 8th.
Okay.
Could, could I ask something else?
Five questions or just one? One.
Um, and I had it on my list and I forgot it. So, so we didn't obviously go over the design guidelines or, you know, I don't know who wrote this stuff, but, um, it talked about mixed-use districts, which none of these are. I mean, there's one district that has Stanleys and stuff like that, but I didn't see that you were saying that the first floor remains commercial and you could build up. So I'm just, I'm confused, like, I don't see that you're talking mixed-use, but then it's in these drafts.
So you can't require mixed-use under the MBTA Communities Act? Maybe we could talk about having a special permit for mixed-use in certain sub-districts? Certainly not in places that are residential, but that's why it was in there. It was, it was just a place marker, essentially.
So you're currently not proposing...
No.
Any mixed-use? No, I mean, the guidelines do spell out mixed-use and you can do it only if you restrict the first floor for commercial.
Right, but, but, well, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we, we can't require it, but we can zone for it. In other words, we can allow it in the overlay district. So we could say something like, in a particular sub-district, you're not required to have first-floor retail, but you're allowed to do it, um, so that...
Okay.
Right, so that they can do it by choice.
But they're...
And we could even offer an incentive. Maybe you can let them go up another story. Let them get a, an extra density if they, if they, uh, if that's a desirable thing to do in one of the sub-districts, so.
But you're not currently proposing?
We're not currently proposing that because that's like the next step. We're, we're not quite at that, the committee's not quite at that level of detail, so.
But I would say there are negatives to doing that, that we're balancing. If you include that in your district, you can't include the acreage, the land area of that parcel. You, it, it's a complicated, um, calculation. And in a town like ours, what we determine with that, that was, including that, or making certain areas in our downtown as a mixed-use district under the guidelines, that would end up hurting us and requiring us to find more acreage in other places. Even though there would be a small discount in the number of units we would be required, um, at the end of the day, it really ends up hurting us more than helping us.
And that, that makes sense. I just didn't, it didn't sync up with what these proposed guidelines were saying, design guidelines were saying. So I just want to make, wanted to make sure that that wasn't something that was not apparent.
Yeah.
I have a question for the next time we meet jointly, and I don't know if you'll be ready with this, but you're talking about these just sort of possible scenarios of how you might, you know, grant extra or achieve these different goals. Is it possible to come with a kind of caps or the limits on, uh, you know, different sub-districts then? And you might need more time to model this, but, um, you know, I'm... It'd be nice to know what we could do without, before the exceptions, because I think that, that could be a worry for people is, you know, if we do these, where do we want to allow potential like density bonuses or something? You know, do we treat one sub-district different than another? So I know that's a next step, but as you get to that, it would be interesting to see that a little more granular so that we can understand the protections and the caps in terms of the, you know, the physical, um, changes that might happen or might not be so different under the zoning overlay. So anyhow, I just, you know, if you could come to the, to the, to a future meeting with that, kind of talk us through that the way you did tonight, I think would be very helpful to illustrate some of those possibilities.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All those are paid.
Good night.
Good night.